It's my pleasure to call the September 28th Meeting of the Board of Education to order. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America And to the Republic for which stands One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'd like to take this opportunity to welcome our guests tonight to our meeting. First thing that we need to make sure you're aware of is that we do videotape our meetings. Our videotape crew is located in the back. And if you would like to be on TV, you have to just turn around and wave at them. And next time you turn on the public TV, on the public station, someone that you know will go, "I saw you on TV." So that's very exciting. All right, we are ready to adopt our agenda, so I would entertain a motion for such.
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very well, motion is carried. We have a new addition to our, not a new addition, but a new order to our agenda tonight. Our superintendent's report is going to come early so that you all have a wonderful opportunity to hear from our superintendent. So I will turn that over to Dr. Carpenter, and you are on, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, board members. At this time, we will look at the superintendent's report that you've had an opportunity to preview earlier, but there are a few points that I want to shed a little additional light on. First off, when we think about the ACT examination, and those results are coming in now at the state level, and we think about our R7 students, we had an average score of 21.9 in terms of composite on the ACT. As a point of comparison, the state of Missouri's average was 20.4. So that 1.5-point edge that we have on the state is significant. For those that may not be extremely familiar with the scoring of the ACT, any gain that's more than .3 or .4 points is statistically significant and not by chance. So when our district scores 1.5 points higher than the state, that's extremely significant and something to be proud of. We also noticed, per our data, that even with that high composite average in our district, we do see some gaps in terms of the subgroup populations of students. And that's something that we'll continue to address in terms of what I believe ACT measures, and that's academic excellence. National American Scholars, some of which I've even had the opportunity to meet when I look at some of the names, but we have three students, and they are Joshua Foster, and Alex Gohegan, and Maggie O'Connor. And if you remember Alex, he was here receiving awards a couple of months ago. And we're extremely proud of that group of young people. Highly qualified staff. We need to give it up for Dr. Emily Miller. Dr. Miller was recognized by the state of Missouri as she was a 2017 recipient of the Missouri Council of Special Education Administrator's Recognition Award. And this award is given to honor significant individual contributions to the field of special education. And she received that award last weekend down at Osage Beach. Let's give Dr. Miller a round of applause. Having worked with her for the past several months, I can think of no one more deserving. You make me proud. Race for the Future, if you have been anywhere in the community, you've seen signage related to Race for the Future. On October 14th, that will begin on that morning at 8:00 a.m. And I've learned that I will be calling the race. So we'll see how that goes. And calling those participants as they cross the finish line. So we're excited about the race. More than $3 million foundation awards have been given to our seven students and schools by way of peak grants. And the fundraiser that is the race is a significant, significant portion of our ability to give to that degree. $422,000 have been raised via the race since its inception. And that's very, very exciting and something that I would encourage you to participate in here in our community. Enrollment update, and this is very important. September 28th, official count was 17,943 students, and that's up by 16 students. We started the year, we believed that we were somewhere over that 18,000 mark, but as enrollment has started to kind of lay itself out, and we have what we have, we're somewhere around 17,943. So that is the official count. I wanted to make sure the board was aware of that. MSBA conference coming up, October 5 through 8. Many of you are participating. And as I peruse the agenda, it looks like a great time of learning for all of our school board members and leaders across the state. That concludes my report. Thank you all for indulging me and listening to questions. I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. President.
Any questions for Dr. Carpenter on his report? Okay, hearing none. Our next item of business are LSHS Missouri Scholars. Several Lee Summit R7 district sophomores were selected to attend the Missouri Scholars Academy, a three-week summer academy program for approximately 330 of Missouri's gifted students. Last month, at the board meeting, we recognized Lee Summit North High School and Lee Summit West High School recipients. The Lee Summit High School Missouri Scholars weren't able to attend since LSHS was conducting their back-to-school night. With that, we wanted to bring them in front of the board for the September meeting. Lee Summit High School Missouri Scholars are Emma Cooney, Alexandria Mez, and Sierra Nyquist. Close to 330 sophomores statewide are selected from among approximately 65,000 students. Acceptance is based on student essay, teacher recommendations, PSAT scores, and IQ tests. The academy is a residential program held on the University of Missouri Columbia and funded by the state of Missouri. The academy features carefully selected faculty and staff, a specially designed curriculum that focuses on liberal arts and a variety of stimulating extracurricular activities. Academy students are able to become part of a unique learning community. Our next piece of recognition goes for International Housekeeping Week. During September, we celebrate and recognize the accomplishments of our custodial staff members through International Housekeepers Week, September 10th through the 16th. Thanks to our outstanding custodians and school districts, buildings and grounds are well cared for, clean, and safe. Sandy Cruz, Assistant Custodial Supervisor Trainer, and Yvette Salgado, Building Manager for Summit Technology Academy, will be representing their coworkers.
Having had the opportunity, board members and audience, to lead a team in the custodial division for a district of about 20,000 students, I thought I had the best group ever. But as I continue to watch these ladies, and watch this team, and watch them do their work, they continue to make me proud. Never seen anyone take more ownership in their spaces. And the commitment to our children in terms of cleanliness of their learning spaces makes me extremely proud. You are awesome. You're the right person for MSB.
I will make an additional comment on this topic. No one appreciates a custodial staff more than a building principal who doesn't have one. And during my first eight years at Summit Tech, I didn't have a day custodian. So guess who did all of that work that had to be done? No. It wasn't my secretary, it was me. And I can appreciate how hard that is to do. Until you've had to do some of the things that these folks have to do, you just have no idea how difficult a job that is. And our building folks across the board do such a spectacular job. I would put our buildings up against any buildings in the country for any reason, and they're just absolutely always ready for school. And that's a very important thing. Without these folks, we would not be ready every day to conduct class. And I know Kim and Dennis and I have experienced that firsthand as building administrators. And we love to have those folks in your building, because otherwise, guess who'd be doing that job? So thank you again for all the hard work that you do. The next portion of our meeting is our comments from the public. Linda, do we have any today?
We do not have any tonight.
Thank you. So we move on then to our board reports and meetings attended. So this portion of our meeting is devoted to allowing our board members who sit on many different committees as a part of their job as a board member, which by the way, again, just for future reference, is a volunteer job. We do not get paid for what we do. And many of us have lots of responsibilities around the community in the pursuance of their duties on the board. So this is an opportunity for each board member to report out on what they have been doing this last month. So I'll start down. Jackie, on your end.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the past month since we last met, I've attended the Lee Summit Chamber Government Relations Committee meeting along with Dr. Carpenter and I believe Kim, for she was there with us. And we gave them the various bits of good news that we had to share. And we actually didn't have to address any questions. So we must be doing a very good job of keeping people informed at that group. And then additionally, and I know it will be a topic further down the agenda, service on the Insurance Health and Benefits Committee will have an extensive report. And I want to congratulate all of the folks that were involved in preparing an extensive amount of analyses of the various options for our insurance plans for the next year.
Mr. Smith?
In late July, Bob and I both attended a cooperating school district's meeting. And it was very interesting. The subject was charter schools and the impact that the charter schools are having on primarily the Kansas City School District. And I learned a lot that night. As you see, when you look at the whole scheme of things of charter schools and their function, both good and bad. October the 2nd, excuse me, October the 3rd, we have a CAC Steering Committee meeting to prepare for our October 23rd, first CAC meeting for the fall. What's been going on?
Phyllis?
Hi, yes, I'd like to start off with in September, I am representative for Team Lee Summit, had the opportunity to work with some fine folks there, led by Jeff Miller. Dr. Miller does an outstanding job managing that meeting, and it's wonderful. We started it off with Sandra Courtney made us homemade biscuits and jelly, which was really great. Just kicked us right into there. And then we had several activities. The day was designed pretty much to set norms, talk about the process for which we conduct Team Lee Summit. I am new to this, and I'm thrilled to be serving on this. A survey is going out October 23rd to all of our staff members here in the R7 district. And we will hope to get those back about mid-December, I believe.
It will be December 1st.
Through December 1st, thank you for clarifying that. So we want to encourage everyone out there to please fill out those surveys. We use them as a tool for a lot of different things that go on in our district. So it was a great meeting all the way around, and got to chat with Rudy Rhodes and some other people. And I just really feel blessed to be on that meeting. There was Rudy out there. Attended the EDC quarterly meeting. It was a packed house held at the Emmeline Ballroom. Dr. Carpenter was there, Julie Dome was there, several others. And it was great. We heard about three presentations. We have three major developments going on in Lee Summit. The Grove, New Longview is expanding, and then also the Paragon Star, which I'm excited about all three of them. They are going to present lots of new challenges as those build for our district. So I was very enlightened by that. Attended the Student Wellness Meeting, that is one that I serve on. Dr. Emily Miller and Dr. Eric Flack run that, conduct that meeting and do a great job. We just discussed basically, are we meeting the needs of the students in this district from a health and wellness standpoint? And it's a really wonderful committee. I had the privilege of standing up with Dr. Carpenter when he was inducted into the Rotary Club. Dennis was his sponsor. Dennis was on vacation. And so I had the opportunity, and I just wanted to say how proud I was to see our superintendent so quickly and energetically getting involved in our community, which is something that the community has been asking, requesting. I get to go the end of October to stand and see Brad Racker's being recognized as one of the Teachers of the Year. I am thrilled that I get to attend that. And I am asking that everybody please keep Councilwoman Diane Seif in your prayers. She has come across a very serious health diagnosis, and she is in the hospital right now. And I did want to let everybody know, please keep her in your prayers. She's a dear and wonderful person for our community and has done a lot on the Business Roundtable, CAC. And so please keep her in your prayers. And I believe, I'm looking forward to MSBA. Kim and I are delegates, and we get to attend that. And just happy to be here and excited for our district.
Thank you, Phyllis. Kim?
All right, first, I represent the board on the Lee Summit Educational Foundation. Just a few things, a few, quite a few things happening with LSEF. First of all, the beginning of the year is when they do their annual campaign with staff members. And then after they finish that campaign, all staff members have an opportunity to also contribute to the foundation through a payroll deduction plan. They also have the Friends of the Foundation campaign, where they go out to the community and seek community support for the Lee Summit Educational Foundation, which of course supports our kids and our schools. So that's currently continuing right now. Dr. Carpenter already mentioned the Race for the Future, which is huge, coming up on October. If you haven't signed up to go, you can still sign up. In fact, I think there's still a $5 discount if you sign up now. But also, if you just don't feel like running or walking, if you just want to stay in bed that morning, you can sign up as a dream partner. And you get a Dream Partner t-shirt too, so it's really cool. Anyway, that's Race for the Future. Just an update, Sheriff Frankie was here, I believe it was at the last board meeting, and gave a foundation report. And she was telling us about the donation of our, through the passing of Mr. Jim Knoll. And that property, actually, the sale of that property is currently in process. And that, once that property is sold, that will be a tremendous benefit. That contribution will be to the foundation, which of course benefits all of our students in the district. So God bless Jim Knoll and his wonderful gift to our schools. The second group I'm on is MSBA as a delegate. The board members will be attending the conference in Tantera, October 4th through the 8th. As Phyllis said, we are the delegates from the Lee Summit Board of Education. Just wanted to update you all. The MSBA did not choose to amend the teacher tenure item that we suggested and voted upon at a previous meeting. So that means that Phyllis and I will need to be really strong advocates for our teachers on this item during that meeting. So we will be fighting to try to keep that advocacy position out of MSBA's advocacy positions. Okay? The only other thing I have is that at the September Government Relations Meeting for the Chamber of Commerce, Dr. Carpenter and Jackie couldn't be at that particular meeting. And so Dr. Carpenter sent me his report. And I did give the report for Dr. Carpenter at that meeting. They were all receptive, and there were no questions.
Adam?
We haven't had a TIF meeting since the last board meeting, so I think it was June. So just a quick update on the last project that we did see. It was passed the city council. That was the villages at View High. They approved the TIF, I think on August 10th. About 34 acres at the, my compass is out here. North, east corner of View High and Third. Right there in the corner, kind of near New Longview. It's going to be quite a few square feet of office space, 126,000, and then I think 87,000 for restaurant and retail. Obviously, a lot of work developer will need to do to get from here to there. But I just wanted to let you know where that was. And I don't think we have any coming down the pipe, at least as far as I know. So it might be a few months before we have another TIF update. And as usual, Finance Committee will have its own special update in just a few moments. All right?
Julie?
Last but not least. Lee Summit cares, Character Trait of the Month, Responsibility. And on their website, it says, "Accepting personal responsibility, acting without continual guidance or superior authority." Put that in your thoughts for today. On the podium, the little one over there, I put little cards out for the Mayor's Character Breakfast, which is January 25th this year. Extremely excited about this. It's always the best time and really puts that good character in your forefront of your mind. So, but with that, we also give out awards. And I have sheets out there, because I know you all hang out with great character people. And well, if you don't, maybe you should try. But anyway, if you can just think of one person to nominate, that would be awesome. You go through those, and they're very meaningful and touching, but we try to get the best character. Look at Rudy, he got one. Yeah. Very cool. So take a sheet and think about the people that you hang out with, or maybe you don't even hang out with them, but you saw something great in them. I would appreciate it. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Recently, as well as Jackie, I sat on the Insurance Committee Group. And that was an interesting experience. More will be coming up on that. Also, Julie and I meet twice a month with Dr. Carpenter. So we've been conducting our meetings with him to talk about issues that are coming before the board and agendas and feedback that we hear in the community, those type of things. So we've been doing that. I had the privilege of, as we all did, attending the opening of Summit Technology Academy. And I was lucky enough to be asked to spend a little time in front of the group and speak. And it truly was an exciting experience for me. And I really enjoyed that opportunity to speak for the board in front of that huge crowd of folks that came to the opening of that beautiful, awesome building. And I believe that is it for all of our board reports. And then we'll be moving on to the next part of our agenda, which is the Finance Committee Report.
All right, back to me. Finance Committee, yesterday, September 27th. I'll give a little update for you here. Investments through August totaled approximately $93.3 million. Operating revenues are comparable percentage-wise to the prior school years. Revenue in the restricted funds, that's nutrition services and activity, are higher when compared to last year due to an internal change or monthly deposit cutoff. Expenses are within expected budget parameters. In 2018 Employee Insurance Plans, our seven administrative team reviewed the process leading up to the recommendation from the district insurance team for the 2018 insurance renewal with support from CBIZ, the district's insurance broker. The insurance team met on two occasions to review claims trending data, responses to the ancillary bid process, and options for health insurance program changes. The insurance team is recommending the district continue coverage with Blue Cross Blue Shield with the addition of a Blue Select Plus Qualified High Deductible Plan. It's quite a name for a plan there. Continuation of the other health plans with a minimal change to the HMO plan related to chiropractic service costs, the addition of the Express Advantage Network for pharmacy and to the full-time individual health insurance premium at $661, an 8% increase from the 2017 rates. It was noted for the 2017 plan year, claims are higher due to a 20% increase in the cost of services, while the number of services increased by less than 5%. The insurance team is also recommending a change to Cigna for dental coverage at a decreased annual premium cost of approximately $94,000. Coverage for life, AD&amp;D, disability, and short-term medical leave administration services is recommended to continue with the standard. VSP is the recommended carrier for vision insurance, and long-term care is recommended to continue with UNUM. Targeted communications will occur following board action. Additional staff for 2017 and '18. Dr. Jeff Miller shared the background information for the additional special education staffing requests, which redirect budget dollars currently spent to pay for educational services outside the district to the hiring of staff to provide required in-district services. Dr. Miller also reviewed the need for formal action by the board for the hiring of two additional teaching FTE to address class size prior to the first day of school at Highland Park and Summit Point Elementary Schools. The 2017, 2018 tax rates. 2017 assessed value increased from the 2016 value by 6.5%, or approximately 118 million, excuse me, 118.8 million due to reassessment. New construction and personal property increases. The increases in assessed valuation require a decrease in the tax rate to maintain the approximate same level of property tax funding for 2017 and '18 as the district received in 2016 and '17. The tax rate of 5.8777 represents a decrease of .1180 over the 2016 rate of 5.9957. Budget amendments incorporating the final assessed values and the tax rate will be presented at the October meeting. MIC Change Order Number 13 includes numerous items required to complete the project, including owner-directed and design changes. Change order includes several credit items with the overall change order increase of $62,732.82 within the original budget allocated for the project. Control Service Company 179D Form. Approval of this form allows for CSC to receive a tax credit for energy-efficient installations for HVAC and hot water systems installed at Underwood Elementary, Lee Summit High School, and Pleasantly Elementary. Previously, the Board of Education approved Form 179D in November 2016 for another project completed by CSC. The district will be provided a summary analysis detailing the energy savings and the final tax credit amount to CSC. Instruction and Maintenance Update. Cowgarell updated the status of the Woodland Sewer, including the activities completed to minimize odor issues and the continuing work with experts for temporary solutions. Staff are working with various vendors to develop punch list items to close out the contracts on other bond-issue projects. That concludes my reports. And with that, I will have two motions. I'm sorry, one motion. That motion is to approve the Treasurer's Report and payment of the bills.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Treasurer's Report and payment of the bills. Do we have any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. President, Julie mentioned, although I do not have a second motion, I might note that no transfer is needed for this month due to revenue in the special revenue fund in excess of expenses.
Okay. And we have 6.04, which is to approve the tax rate for the 2017-'18 school year.
I move that the board approve the 2017-'18 tax rate of 4.7577 for the General Incidental Fund, .500, actually, excuse me, those are my eyes, 0.0500 for the Capital Projects Fund, and 1.0700 for the Debt Service Fund for a total levy of $5.8777. Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the tax rate for 2017-'18. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the tax rate for seventeen eighteen, are there uh, any questions or discussion on this item? I will note that we conducted a tax rate hearing at six thirty, uh, that was an open uh, hearing, uh, a few of you were here for the very end of that. Uh, so, uh, we did have an opportunity for the public to comment on that, uh, although I would imagine that most people would not. Comment negatively on your taxes going down by eleven cents. So, hearing no other comments on that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next portion of our agenda is our first consent agenda, and we have uh, items uh, seven point zero one. Through seven point zero nine, so we'd accept a motion on that.
Um, I move. I move to approve uh, the consent agenda items, seven point zero one to seven through seven point zero nine as presented.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second, questions or comments? Julie?
I'm um, a little concerned, just 'cause I'm a nerd, um, about one of the food truck names. If they're, um, if they're on our campus and they actually have that name on the truck. Do I need to?
I agree with one.
Sender seven point zero two, under contracts, uh, under five thousand, uh, we have anyone here who can speak to that particular item?
I'm okay with it if it's, doesn't have the name on the truck, but I just think that, yeah, it. So, I. Yeah.
I was gonna say, it may depend on when the truck was there, if it was there after the students had left for the day, and if it was, it was a teacher in service type thing afterwards. I don't know, I don't know if the students were still there.
Well, it says the date that it was, the contract term was September fifteenth.
Right. Oh, I, I just wanted to bring that up to us, I.
We are ha- we are happy to um, look into that further and provide um, the board more information about that detail.
Hey, I, I mean, I, I just feel like we shouldn't even have used that one if, it's my thought, so.
Be happy to follow up.
Thank you.
Adam, did you have a question?
Um, not, not a question, just um, kind of a unique, and I think really cool thing that the Lee Summit Police Department did by donating a. A retired bomb recovery robot that really jumped out at me is. Cool, because we have a great robotics department, they'll benefit a lot from it, but uh, we already have a great police department here in the city, and um, just further evidence of their partnership, so thank you, LSPD.
Okay, we have any further comments on uh, the consent agenda? Uh, hearing, seeing none, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item eight is the second part of our consent agenda, I failed to uh. Failed to remind the audience that our consent agenda are items that are fairly routine in nature, which we have all seen ahead of time. And uh, we approve these in large part because some of the items like contracts under five thousand dollars would be quite lengthy and take a great deal of time if we had to go through each one of them. Uh, so, uh, we do that to speed the process up, uh, these are generally routine things. Uh, this particular portion of our agenda are con- contracts that are over five thousand, and these are contracts that. Uh, the board will ratify because they've already been executed, uh, and in most cases, or in all cases, these contracts were contracts that were executed. Due to the fact that they needed to be completed before the board met, so some of these are items that uh, fall under the emergency contracts clause of our uh. Of our policy, or they were contracts that we would have lost significant amount of time or money to uh, to approve at the board meeting. So I would entertain a motion on item eight.
Um, I move that the board ratify the contracts as presented in items eight point zero two to eight point zero three.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, ratify contracts over five thousand dollars. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very well, motion carries. And the next part of our agenda are contracts that we will approve, uh, that are over five thousand dollars, and these are new contracts, again. Board has had an opportunity to look at each one of these, uh, and uh, and view them ahead of time, so these are items that uh, the board is familiar with. Uh, so, at this point, I would accept a motion on item nine.
Um, Mr. President, I move that the board approve new contracts over five thousand dollars as presented in consent agenda items, these would be nine point zero two. Through nine point one four.
Yeah, the motion is second, do we have any questions or discussion on this part of the agenda?
Okay, um, first of all, I just wanted to say, because it seems like for the, for the public audience watching our, us operate. Yes, we've had a chance to go through and read through all of these items, but maybe you don't know exactly what's in all of these. So I'd just like to elaborate on just a few of the items in number nine, if, if you indulge me here for just a moment. Because there's multiple opportunities for our students and our teachers that are contained within these items. Nine point zero two regarding the multi-district deaf hard of hearing uh, program, that's a cost of twenty-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars ninety-eight cents. And that's for student evaluation development of IEPs, as well as assistive technology and support of our personnel. And nine point eight, developing minds by Marsha Tate, that contract uh, is for an October twenty-fifth workshop for eight thousand dollars. Um, I only had one question on that one, how many new teachers do we have who will be attending that particular workshop?
Actually, I might defer to Dr. Kevin Daniel, Dr. Kevin Daniel is actually in charge of our B-TAP and is working with our new teachers this year. Um, Dr. Daniel, if you'd be willing to come forward to um, address how many teachers that you, will be receiving that training?
Yeah, we'll have about thirty, plus or minus, okay, thirty.
Thank you very much, I'm sure, I'm sure that'll be beneficial to our new teachers, and it's just, just, it's so important that we support our new teachers by providing them. With that quality professional development, so I applaud that. Um, nine point uh, one zero is the Dave Burgess Consulting, and that's for a service training in October of two thousand eighteen. For our beginning teachers, it's called Teach Like a Pirate Professional Development Program. Uh, that sounds like fun, um, and it's designed to increase student and teacher enthusiasm and um, engagement in learning. And I say, anything you can do to keep students engaged in learning is an awesome thing, um, the, the more you bring them along with you, the more they learn. Finally, on nine point eleven, the math workshop, that's a contract for thirty-one thousand dollars, there are two presenters, four days of workshops who will. Uh, my question mark, and I think that was probably answered in an email that I didn't get till the last minute today, get to today, but. Um, who will be attending these workshops, how many teachers will benefit? Um, they say it's eight dollar, eight, eight days of traveling institute, but only four calendar days listed for the workshops. Um, so is that two presenters, who knows about the math workshops, who can answer that?
Math workshop is occurring for all of our elementary teachers, that training actually began two years ago. There was an initial cohort, a second cohort, and then this is the year that all of the elementary teachers, K through six, complete math workshop training. And all teachers attend a series of four days worth of training, and we break that over a, a two-week period and bring two presenters in.
Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Uh, yes, I wanted to do the same thing, I wanted to bring a couple things, uh, draw attention to a couple items on here, item uh, nine point zero six. Uh, was especially near and dear to my heart, as a theater educator, uh, it, it makes me happy to see that seventeen years we're still continuing. Take our eighth graders at Bernard Campbell Middle School, down to Missouri Rep, I think that's great, there's so many lessons learned. And uh, the theater education, and then I also wanna bring everybody's attention, nine point zero seven is the Cowtown Throwdown. Here in Lee Summit, and it is an honor to be hosting this with Cerner at Lee Summit High School. Uh, it's a great event, I would challenge and charge everybody to go watch this event. Um, it's mesmerizing to see the student work that takes place all over the greater Kansas City area. And particularly the talents that are in our Lee Summit School District when it comes to robotics, these kids are, have got it going on. Their chaperones are great, their mentors, they're being mentored by some of the very best, so I just wanted to, to throw that out, please go and see that. I don't miss it, I take my grandson, and it is incredible what these young talented kids are doing, so that's what I wanted to say.
And Bob, I would echo what Phyllis had to say, I, I think it's great that we're hosting that event with the excellence that we've seen. Uh, with our robotics program from the middle schools through our high school, and then uh, the uh. Uh, the Casey rep to go see A Christmas Carol, it, it'll be, it'll be, it's just terrific that we do that. And then finally, uh, not to be forgotten, nine point one four, the Grand Teton Science Camp Trip. And I think that is an amazing experience, that part of the country, i- if, if you don't like science in a classroom. It is amazing to go see that part, uh, and float on the Snake River, tho- those uh, young people will really have a wonderful experience.
Yeah, thank you all for your comments, so we have a motion on the table, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, we are at the part of our agenda. Uh, where although it seems like we've been making some decisions, these are items for decision that will have presentations that come with them. And our first one is to approve the special services personnel request.
Absolutely, we're happy to speak to that, uh, in background information, you can see that this request specifically is for two behavior coaches, two parent professionals, and one prep assistant. With a cost of a part of a hundred and seventy-four thousand. Uh, twenty-eight dollars, uh, and that's basically reallocated, uh, within the uh, current special education budget. It relates to savings actually of thirty-three thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars, because we're uh, basically transitioning and putting this money where we would normally spend it for. Partners and behavior milestones, which is a contracted program outside the district, we're spending that for kids in our own district. And I would just say, Dr. Emily Miller can uh, get more into the details if needed. The one thing that might be a question to me is the one prep assistant there, the one prep assistant basically is to free up some time. With our current secretarial structure at Miller Park, so that person can specifically notify parents before the destruction of records. Uh, that's the area that we've needed to work on, that person currently multitask during that time when it comes to trying to feed kids and perform other duties. So um, great work uh, by Dr. Emily Miller as far as looking at providing better services for our kids, and at the same time saving money. And I would answer any other questions that you might have, or direct them toward Dr. Emily Miller.
If you have any questions on this, Ed, I would entertain a motion, please.
Okay, uh, be resolved that the Board of Education approved the reallocation of approximately one hundred and seventy-four thousand and twenty-eight dollars in cost for the proposed special services position.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Adam, ten point.
Dr. Carpenter?
Yes, sir, and item ten point two, I'll also turn it over to Dr. Miller. This is a result of our staffing for the start of the school year, but I thought it appropriate to make certain that the board was involved in the approval. Of the additional staffs that were not a part of the original budget, Dr. Miller.
Very well said, uh, very well said, uh, every year, as you know, when registration rolls around enrollment, we take a look at numbers, uh, bless you. Uh, fortunately or unfortunately, we have bubbles that occur within our enrollment structure, this year we had two of those. One was at Highland Park Kindergarten, and the other one was at Summit Point Elementary. Uh, and to address those and make sure we stay within DESI standards, administration uh, took a leadership role. Uh, thank you, Dr. Carpenter, and decided to go ahead and hire those two positions, so we're coming back to ask the board to ratify. Uh, those uh, contracts and the change to the budget. If you have any further questions, I'd be more happy to address it or answer them.
Sorry. Adam? Sure, I, I mean, I just wanna point out this, the timing of all this and how it has, has to occur is really, really challenging, and you made a comment. Yesterday, finding uh, high-quality individuals, kind of that late in, in the season, so to speak. Um, really happy with how that came out, and has there been a year where we haven't had to do a last-minute hire based on these?
Uh, I can't think of a year that we probably haven't made some type of adjustment, I think one of the things that deserves a, a big compliment here, and it talks about the leadership of this district. If you look at the date, I mentioned August the eleventh, well, August the eleventh is a Friday. And so, we had staff that worked over the weekend to make sure that meet your teacher, that these folks were in place for Monday night. And that's a lot of commitment uh, by our staff, and I could tell you the two people that we did hire, I followed up, they're quality folks, are doing a great job, so we're very blessed.
Agreed, and so, so you do this incredible job of planning and everything right and get it done, and then there's just that last, the stuff that you can't do anything about. And we still somehow made that work, so just guess everybody did a great job, that's all I'm gonna say.
I will entertain a motion?
I move that the board approve the addition of two elementary teacher FTEs for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Hey, Dr. Carpenter?
Yes, sir, at this time, I will turn item ten point oh three over to Dr. Miller. Probably one of the most cumbersome things that we've been involved in to kick off this year is. Processing through our insurance providers, and how do we develop paying options that, number one. Give our employees what they need, but most importantly is fiscally responsible for our district. In a climate of increased, increased insurance cost across the board. So, I want to commend the teachers and various personnel from across the district, many of you school board members, for working through this process. It gets us out of the woods for this coming school year, or for the, this coming plan year. But as we look at trend patterns and look at what's going on all around us, I'm not certain that it keeps us out of the woods. And oftentimes, when I look at the model, I have questions in my own mind about sustainability. So that's something that we'll continue to monitor, and we'll continue to watch, but we do have a recommendation that will take us. Into the new plan year effective January one, Dr. Miller.
Uh, very, very well said, um, Team Lee Summit, uh, and I'm gonna take a little bit of time here, Team Lee Summit, when we do our survey, one of the things that comes back. Um, from across our employee group, whether it be support staff, professional staff, certified staff, or administrative staff. Is how important the benefit package is here for our seven. And uh, there has been an enormous amount of work, again, this year, uh, starting back in the spring with our partnership with Cbiz, Sarah McMillan. Uh, Judy Hedrick, obviously, taking a look at bidding our ancillary um, uh, plans. Uh, we did not go, have to go out this year and rebid our medical plan, 'cause we did that during the two thousand seventeen year. But our ancillary plans, which once again, uh, you know, Adam did such a nice job with the financial report there, kind of highlighting. Uh, those which are dental, vision, life and disability insurance, uh, and then also taking a look, uh, as he was mentioned through um, our long-term co- our, our long-term disability. Um, and uh, long-term coverage with the district's current provider, UNUM, with no plan changes there. I wanna stop just for a second to highlight this process, because one of the things that I think that the community may not be aware of. Uh, we have an insurance team, which is comprised of members from every building, our department, approximately fifty people make up this insurance team. We also have representatives from our retired teacher group, uh, that's set on that team. And I can please to say that we had the highest participation this year of our board. Uh, Dr. Carpenter made every meeting and spoke at every meeting, and I appreciate uh, his leadership, uh, you know. Kim, uh, Bob, and Jackie even phoned in both meetings, August the twenty-ninth to September the thirteenth, uh, to that group. And then, if you look at the finance committee with the work that we did with uh, uh, you know, obviously Dennis and Adam, I think that our board has been very involved in this process. Uh, our recommendation uh, is for this year, if you look, it does increase, uh, and I think it's important for our staff to notice. And for the community, that we're putting eight percent toward this, we're raising uh, our current contribution from six hundred twelve dollars to six hundred sixty-one. hundred and sixty-one. Um, Janet, uh, Maggie and Molly are here as well, as well as Sarah, uh, in case there's any questions that the board might have into the weeds. Our recommendation is that we move forward, Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance with the district funding, six hundred and sixty-one dollars per employee. Cigna for dental with the district funding, eighteen eighty-two point, uh, per employee. At the V S P for vision and the standard for life, A D and D, long-term disability and short-term medical leave. Um, I think it's a solid plan. I think it meets the needs of our staff. Uh, the trend data, as Dr. Carpenter said, uh, sustainability is something that I'm concerned about also as we continue to move forward. And I think that's why we want to continue to be open-minded, uh, when it comes to future options and providing wonderful benefits for our employees and our retirees. Any questions at this time? I'd be more happy to entertain them. Uh, Dr. Hedrick, anything else that you would like to add?
Um, I just, I'm looking at the, at the text here. Um, Dr. Miller, did, did you, did you say that we are going to save ninety-five thousand dollars on our, uh, dental plan by switching companies on that? Did you say?
That's correct.
Okay. I, I didn't remember you saying that.
Actually, I don't know that I did say that. I think that actually Adam mentioned that when he gave his finance committee report. So, thank you for the clarification. The credit should go to him.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion and then we can have some discussion.
I move that the board approve coverage and the related contracts for the twenty eighteen plan year as follows. Blue Cross Blue Shield for health insurance with the district funding at six hundred and sixty-one dollars per employee. Cigna for dental with the district funding at eighteen dollars, eighty-two cents per employee. V S P for vision and the standard for life, A, uh, accidental death and disability, long-term disability and short-term medical leave, claim administrative services and U N U M for long-term care. Second?
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there discussion? Jackie?
I, since I was called out as having been on the phone, I'd like Sarah to stand up and be congratulated. Uh, there was, uh, some weekend work, I understand, and preparing and I, I congratulate you and thank you for the hard work. It was a, it was a very easy process, uh, wherever I was to, uh, be able to understand what was going on. Thank you.
I would like to make a comment, uh, having been a part of this team as well. Um, and having been a user of the district's insurance for thirty-plus years, uh, and, uh, then after that, uh, for a while, uh, I can say definitively that there is no higher priority than ensuring the health and wellness of our employees. That being said, the constantly rising deductibles and the constantly rising cost of insurance is not sustainable over the long run as it currently stands. We are going to have to do some very difficult work and some very hard work to pull these costs into what, uh, we can live with as employees and as a district. So, uh, as we begin this process, which will, will have to start a little earlier this next year, uh, we need to be thinking very hard about how we can help our employees to be able to remain healthy without going bankrupt. So, it's a challenge and, and we're gonna have to rise to meet that challenge. Any other, any other comments or, Dr. Carpenter?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, one thing I would mention without going too far in the weeds and that's the introduction of the Express Advantage Network. And I think that's going to be important for all of our employees to take notice of and we start getting material out to our employees sooner than later because if you used to go to your local, whatever the place might be, whether it's your C B S or your Walgreens, you may find out that it's not in the Express Advantage Network. And if you continue to do that, you're going to incur a ten-dollar penalty in terms of the cost for that script. So, I think that's very important for us to get that out to our employees because, you know, a person taking three medications and they're going to the wrong place, then that can be thirty dollars. And I think that's significant. So, we'll start that work sooner than later and that's probably one of the details that I believe we need to bring a little bit of attention to.
Thank you, Dr. Carpenter.
I had one more thing.
Yes, Kim.
Um, I just wanted to point out too that I was not a board representative on that committee. I was a retiree representative on that committee because I represented the retired teachers. Um, one of the important aspects that I found in this whole process too, that I don't think that district employees and retirees are as aware of as we should be, is when you're getting ready to have a procedure that you know you have to have like an M R I or a CAT scan or some other form of a test, um, that there are opportunities through our insurance, if you'll call the insurance, to, um, basically shop around and see where you can get that procedure done, uh, for, for, uh, the lesser amount of money. And that will save more money out of your pocket and it will also save us on our insurance costs. So, I would encourage all of us to be aware of that and to continue to shop for those costs, for those procedures. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. After no other comments, uh, we have a motion on the table. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. And it is time for?
Personnel report. Out of Jeff Miller.
Ten point oh one through, uh, ten point oh four seem to be mine tonight. Uh, ten-page report, uh, lot of, uh, movement and opportunity, uh, at the beginning of the school year. More than happy to answer your questions. I might point out that we do have a, uh, one board member that has a relative on here when we take a look at that, uh, voting. And that, that person I've talked.
We'll entertain a motion.
Okay, we recommend that the personnel transactions, uh, be approved as presented and contracts issued.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I must abstain. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. It is time for, uh, we have no, uh, presentations tonight and we have, uh, one written report from Kyle and his good folks in Facilities and Maintenance. And I believe most of that was probably covered pretty adequately during the finance report. If you have questions for Kyle, uh, if not, we will move to our roundtable. And we'll start our roundtable tonight, uh, with Ms. Kim.
Um, I just wanted to say that, um, I had some great opportunities, um, this month to get into some schools. Um, some of us, um, attended the twentieth anniversary of Cedar Creek Elementary School, uh, the actual assembly during the day with all the kids and Dr. Carpenter was there and, um, I believe we both got the opportunity to dance a little bit there at the end of the assembly.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yes, yes. Um, but it was, it was a lot of fun. Um, and the, and the kids really got into it. It was a joy. Um, I started my school visits today, uh, by visiting, I promised that I'd visit all of our schools in the district and I, I'm going to be doing that on Thursdays. Uh, but I started today at Highland Park Elementary and I look forward to visiting all the schools and the district buildings before the school year concludes. So, um, I'd like to especially thank Linda Ismer, our, our board and superintendent secretary for scheduling all those visits for me because she's a peach. Okay. Um, just one more thing, um, just FYI for you all, um, I'll be out of circulation for at least a few weeks, starting on October seventeenth, um, with the operation of my right shoulder in my hand. And so, although I voted for changing the October school board meeting to October nineteenth, um, I will not be able to attend the next meeting because I'm gonna kind of be out of it a little bit. I think I'll still be on some pain meds there. So, um, and my apologies, uh, if I don't communicate too well via email during that time, it'll take me a little while to regain the use of my right arm and that's my dominant arm. So, my apologies in advance to you all.
Adam?
Right, I missed the, uh, C C E assembly, but I went to the picnic, basically carnival afterward and the turnout was amazing. I was literally expecting a handful of parents and some of their kids and, uh, like some hot dogs, but they brought in food trucks, bounce house, gigantic slide, wonderful time. Several people came up to me, um, and had good things to say about start to the new year and a couple mentioned Dr. Carpenter. So, it was a great experience there. I brought my kids, so I didn't do too much socializing. I had to chase them most of the time. Um, Kyle Gorrell, maybe he's still there? Yeah. I'm not gonna ask you a question, don't, don't worry, but with, with M I C opening, um, I, I know it's not quite over with yet, but I think of all people to celebrate that moment, you've, you've gotta be on the top of that list with all the work you put into it managing that project and just wanted to thank you for. And I thought I saw folks from C-Biz, I don't know if they, they still back, oh, yeah, of course. Thanks, sorry we didn't ask you any questions during the insurance portion, but I really appreciated their comparisons and kind of looking into all those things and your partnership. So, thanks for being here. Um, I regret, um, similar lines here, won't be at Race for the Future. Um, kind of bummed out, so I'll be a, be a dream, dream partner in front of the foundation, but I'm taking the kids to Chicago that weekend to visit an ant. So, uh, good luck, run hard and have a great month.
Julie?
I really don't have much, but I, um, I'm hoping that I won't be at Race of the Future and I'm not gonna say why because it would jinx us, but, um, um, that's all I'm gonna say. I really am excited about this year. It started off as a great year, all this good stuff going on in the community and the schools and I'm just really excited still. Thank you.
Jackie?
Thank you, Bob. Uh, the, uh, M I C, uh, opening experience, uh, no one's mentioned that the governor was here for, with us. And, uh, after he met with the students, he went into the nursing units and I joined him and, uh, his staff and his experience in the delivery room, uh, was one that I did not record on film. Uh, he was, uh, very dignified in his manner, uh, but I do know his staff was, uh, uh, quite reserved, uh, observing the experience. So, uh, I, I thought it was just, it'll be something that I always remember. And, and I might add, uh, I was at the governor's economic development conference, uh, about a week later and as he talked about, uh, their work in, uh, generating economic development in the state, he was, uh, starting out his remarks and we had just visited and he said, "We are working to grow the economy from Lee Summit to St. Louis." And the event was in St. Louis. He, he didn't, and, and I'm not throwing Kansas City under the bus here, but he said Lee Summit. So, that was really terrific to hear that. So, you know, those kinds of opportunities to bring people and show them, our community really, uh, raise our visibility. Uh, the, uh, other thing that I've done in the community was I attended the Lee Summit North Homecoming Parade and, uh, I'm here to lobby for homecomings be confined to October. It was about ninety degrees, uh, and, and I felt sorry for the kids wearing the sharks, uh, for the Sharknado floats and, and so, and some of the other folks. So, uh, that's just, uh, me, uh, observing and, and, uh, the, uh, I will just say that the company I work for has made a donation and is helping the foundation. Uh, I don't know whether I will be there, just depends on how cold it is and whether I need to be out strolling in cold morning air, uh, that, for health reasons. And then, uh, I will make one last pitch. It's gonna be a beautiful weekend for golf on Saturday. Shamrock, uh, Hills, the Class of Eighty, our scholarship effort, uh, they are still taking registrations and I imagine if you show up that morning, they'll, they'll work you in. So, it'll be a, it'll be a great event. Please stop by. And, and there's a raffle there too and they have, uh, auction items as well and food. So, it's a one-stop kind of deal. Fun and food and other opportunities to donate.
Thank you, Jackie. Dennis?
Well, I don't know. The, the M I C, I didn't see the governor in the, uh, delivery room and up in the, in the, in the, in the nurses part of that, but I will say, Kim and Bob and I took a, a tour back in probably early, late June or early July of the facility. And my wife was a, is a retired orthopedic nurse and I went home and told her, "You gotta come see this nursing section." I mean, and she's always said, since this has come about, gosh, I wish, just a few short years ago when she was going through nurses training, that, that, uh, we could have, I could have had that kind of training, got those prerequisites and those kind of things done before I moved into the, uh, to the nursing, uh, actually became a nurse. And then she went to the dedication with me, uh, at M I C and we went up and into that and saw the mannequins and I saw where, because I, we were young Mary and she was still going through nurses training and, and she wanted to practice giving me shots, but we made, I, I, I made her do it in an orange, but we showed her at the, uh, at, at the M I C that, uh, uh, I mean, all of the mannequins, which are kind of spooky in a sense, uh, but the things that, that could go on there and, and what fine opportunity that those nursing students are, are, and that's just one, uh, asset of, of the program. Uh, so, kudos to everybody out there that's, that are doing it. I've been out of town and I got home, uh, this, early this afternoon, so I, I, I tried to read the paper real quick and I did. I gotta say this because on the front page of the, of the Lee Summit Tribune was Bernard C Campbell Middle School. It is somewhat important to me and, uh, but the, uh, and Dr. Lewis and Dr. I, I'm probably gonna mess this up, so you can correct me, but, uh, as I used to always do anyway, uh, but, uh, um, uh, the, we, they honored the custodial, uh, staff who we know is such, so, so important to, uh, and our cheerleaders provided a meal for them, uh, and that was on the front page of, of the Tribune. So, kudos to, it'll always been R. Campbell Jr. height, but, but V C M, that's okay. Thank you, that's all.
Phyllis?
Yeah, well, while we're on the discussion of the M I C, I remember my first tour about five years ago, Lani Medcap gave me the tour over at the other campus and I walked by and I said, "Oh, that's cool, we have patients here." And she said, "No, those are simulators." And, uh, it, it did kind of weird me out a little bit too, but on that same topic, the students that are graduating from there are just full of poise and confidence. After, uh, the M I C celebration, uh, Governor Drytens went into a room and he did a press conference with, uh, three of the graduates or one soon-to-be graduate. And I was beaming with pride at the way these young people conducted themselves, the way they answered questions. They were well poised, they were spoken, they carried themselves confidently and I've just got to believe that's all part of that training that's going on in the district of the M I C. So, I really wanted to jump in on that. Um, so, I just pledged for the Friends Foundation and I'd like to see all of my fellow board members pledge as well. I told Cheryl that I would visit with all of you if you would like some personal consultation. I would be happy to give that or direction, but it would be really great to see it because this money is just money well, well, well spent. Uh, last Friday night was Oktoberfest in Lee Summit. It's always a huge celebration in our community. Uh, very proud of our, uh, three high schools. Uh, the theater departments and music departments presented excerpts of their musicals. Uh, Lee Summit High School is doing The Hunchback of Notre Dame. I am assistant directing on that with Mr. Hensley and I'm having a ball working with those kids. Uh, a huge show to undertake. Uh, Lee Summit West is doing How to Succeed in Business and that is, uh, being directed by Brad Rackers, who is our Teacher of the Year. And then Lee Summit North is doing, uh, Ichabod Crane. So, all three of those high schools took those stages that Friday night and it was a packed crowd with all the other high school going, uh, football going on. Those kids showed up and they did a really great job and they made us proud. So, and then after that, I raced to the football game, Lee Summit, Lee Summit North and it was just awesome to be back at that stadium for a football game. Go Chiefs! That's what I want to say because I'm a big Chiefs fan. And then Adam and I are going to be playing a round of golf together next Thursday at M S B A. Every year we have the opportunity to play golf with some of our, uh, other superintendents in the, in the state and, uh, so, we're looking forward to it. I know that, I was happy to know that he was gonna be on my team because he is quite a good golfer, so. Uh, and then finally, uh, I'm a newly elected, uh, member to the, uh, Lee Summit Symphony Board. Uh, and then finally, uh, I'm a newly elected, uh, member to the, uh, Lee Summit Symphony Board. We have a concert coming up on the twenty-first, I will remind you about that. Uh, Bob White is our executive director, he and Candy, they do a marvelous job. Looking forward to the concert, looking forward to being involved, and then one final thing, I, I really wrote it and I underlined it. Um, I just want to say to the community that we have three, you elected three really good new school board members. Uh, Kim Fritchy, I've known for years, and I am learning so much from you because of your high school, uh, of your middle school experience and teaching, and I'm just really, really happy to have that. Dennis Smith, I've known you for a long time, and I'm learning a lot from you, I feel like it's, we ever evolve as a board. And then lastly, Jackie, you just bring a wealth of knowledge in legislative and, and government, and I just feel like I just want to learn everything that you're, you're sharing with us. So I just wanted the community to know that you did a really good job in electing three outstanding school board members.
Dr. Carpenter?
Absolutely, Mr. President, I'll be brief, board members, but I do want to echo some of the sentiments I hear related to the quality of work that our young people are doing across the district. I mean, I go out and I continue to be proud as I engage with them, as I learn more about them in their respective spaces and their various schools. They started me with a Twitter hashtag Starstruck Soup. And so as I capture some of what they're doing, I've been hashtagging it Starstruck Soup, and that's been very, very cool for me. Another thing that was super cool was last Friday night, and my nights start to all run together, yeah, last Friday night. Um, it, it's amazing how these young people sustain themselves in terms of their programs, too, when I think about the robotics team and how they ha- hold their own camps to fundraise and fund those activities that they participate in. But last Friday night, the Lee Summit High School Tigrettes, last week, they conducted a two-day camp for little kids to do some preliminary dance and that type thing, and I think they ran the camp last Tuesday and Thursday. And my wife was diligent in taking my four-year-old to the camp, and the culminating activity was Friday night, they had a chance to perform at halftime of the football game to Bruno Mars. And if you haven't seen that video, it's one that I'll be able to blackmail Leila with for a long time. But i- it, it was super exciting, and it's something that still resonates with her, so she tells me, "Dad, I'm gonna be a Tigrette." And I'm gonna have to burst a bubble at some point and tell her that she's in the Lee Summit North attendance zone. But, but right now she believes she's going to be a Tigrette, and that's okay.
A northern star.
Northern star, or maybe an in-district transfer or something, who knows? All right, but, but no, that was a fun weekend, but great activity when our young people lead that type of experience and really start grooming our, our little people, that was very, very exciting.
Thank you, Dr. Carpenter and board members, uh, my only comment is, uh, uh, that I, I just want to share again, and I probably said this earlier, but, uh, our board has been working extraordinarily hard, uh, since, uh, April elections, and, uh, we have an outstanding, outstanding group of people up here that are doing the business of the district, and they're getting it done, uh, in a way that is, uh, uh, that you all should be proud of, they're, we're asking good questions, we're getting good answers, we're working together, and we're moving forward with the business of educating our students, which is what school boards are supposed to be doing. And it is a privilege to sit in this chair and help lead that, uh, help lead that effort. So I want to thank my board members for your service and all the great things that you're doing, and we will continue to do that, and I think you'll continue to see good things come from, from this group of folks. So with that, we are adjourned, thank you so much, folks.